Well, if they're going to speak on this item, it's going to be three minutes.
That's all right. All right, apologize for starting a little bit late, but thank everyone for coming out, greatly appreciated. So if you'll do roll call, please.
Board member Schroeder?
Here.
Board member Breikus?
Here.
Board member Jablonski?
Here.
Vice Chair Fitz Kelly?
Here.
And Chair McKay?
Here.
If we could please stand for the pledge.
My name is Stu Fly, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Resolution, if you would read this resolution.
This is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida recommending that the town council amend the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, the ULDC, pertaining to the regulation of new commercial plant nurseries as a special exception use, recommending that the town council amend the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code, Section 1030, Terms Defined, Article 45 Agricultural and Rural Districts, Section 045-030, General Provisions, and 045-50, Permitted and Prohibited Uses, Article 60 Community Facility District, Section 060-030, Permitted and Prohibited Uses, amending Article 100 Application Submittal and Notice Procedures, Sections 100-020, General Application Requirements, 100-030, Minimum Required Content for All Public Hearing Notifications, and 100-060, Mail Notice Requirements for Public Hearings, recommending the creation of Article 112 Special Exception Uses and providing for an effective date.
All right.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Any public comment on this item?
Do you want us to address it first?
Yeah, go ahead. I'll let you.
Sure, Mayor, and for the members of the public who may not be accustomed to these hearings, I'll give you a brief overview of what's going on now. When you consider any changes to a zoning code or land development code, it requires two essentially different meetings to start the process. The first meeting is called the Local Planning Agency Meeting, which in Southwest Ranches is the town council. After this meeting, the same item is heard again a second time at a meeting of the actual town council. But what we have always done in the history of the town is all the testimony and discussion and everything that occurs at the first meeting, if it gets, it's a recommendation to the town council, gets incorporated into the transcript and as such, everyone doesn't have to speak twice and you don't have to stay the whole second meeting unless you want to repeat something. So that's essentially what we're going to do tonight. We're going to open up the Local Planning Agency Meeting. We're going to have public input on the item in full presentation by ourselves and discussion. Then the Local Planning Agency makes a recommendation to itself as the town council, and then the town council takes up the item and makes a determination on first reading of an ordinance. If the ordinance is adopted on first reading, then it goes to a second meeting of the town council at another date for final adoption of the ordinance. Explain a little bit about what, where we're at before I turn it over to my partner Katie Several months ago, it was a long time ago now actually, seven, eight months ago, we started getting complaints by residents who came to the town council to state that smaller properties, one acre lots, you know, pretty small vacant lands were being converted into commercial nursery operations and impacting their way of life. As a result, the town council wanted to work on enacting some legislation to try to put some parameters on commercial nursery operations, commercial landscape operation. The town directed Jeff Cadums to start working on some language, which Jeff did a great job of doing, and presented it before the town's comprehensive advisory board. The Com Plan Board reviewed the language for, correct me if I'm wrong, it was before them four or five months, you know, somewhere around there, going back and forth in the language and what would finally be adopted. The problem with the first drafts of this legislation was it tried to look at it as a one-size-fits-all scenario, meaning that, you know, all, all commercial operations should be treated the same. They all should have the same hours of operation, they all should have the same limitations, a number of plants, the number of vehicles, and it was looking at, you know, major restrictions that would impact everyone uniformly. The problem that we had with that when we went back and looked at it was that not all commercial landscape operations and commercial nurseries are the same. Most of them are different. Some of them are located on arcurial roadways, some of them, you know, only open two days a week to the public, some of them, you know, only have so many vehicles within its establishment. And as a result, we came back to the council and said, let us find an alternative to what's been proposed to try to give you all the ultimate say in the process through a special exception procedure. And what that would mean would mean that a landscape, a commercial nursery or commercial landscape operation would have to apply to the town council to say, I would like to be a commercial nursery or commercial landscape operation, which is retail sales, and, and then the council then could look on a case-by-case basis to see the potential impact that that operation would have on the community. Maybe some of them you would say, okay, you're open nine to five, we're okay with that. Or we don't want you open on Sunday because you're directly next to a house of worship. Or where are you going to park your employees? We're okay with this if you have a location for your employees. But we believe that that decision should be left to the council on a case-by-case basis to ensure neighborhood compatibility and where that landscape operation fit into the process. So as a result of that, and the theory that that's probably more sound than trying to create a one-size-fits-all policy, I came back to my office and fortunately for me, Katie Edwards and I have worked together for some time now. And those of you who don't know Katie Edwards, for another month, she is a representative in the Florida House until she officially ends her term in the November election. I don't know how many of you know Katie or where she's from, so although I normally wouldn't do this, I'm going to give just a brief background who Katie is. Katie's family is one of the largest landowners of farmland in the state of Florida. They have well over 5,000 acres, five generations of farmers in her family. So just so that you all know, because I'm going to turn it over to Katie in a minute, because I'm not too proud to say that she has far more knowledge, experience in agriculture operations than I could ever have. Katie was previously served from 2002 to 2010 as the Executive Director of the Dade County Farm Bureau, where she advocated for farmers and nursery growers on land use regulatory and legislative issues at a federal, state, and local level. She's a Broward native, she was elected to the Florida House in 2012, and she sponsored and passed significant legislation, some of them in farming, including all of the farming regulations relating to cannabis Katie was the lead drafter of. She graduated from Clemson University with a BS in Agriculture, and she has a law degree from FIU. Just some of the degrees to understand the scope of where she is agriculturally. Aside from standard awards like the Association of Counties Award recipient, she was named the Florida Farm Bureau Federation Lawmaker of the Year, she was named the Florida Farm Bureau Federation Champion of Agriculture, she was named the Florida Chamber of Commerce Distinguished Award recipient, and she received the American Agrowomen Levin Award for female farmers. So the list goes on and on, and if there's anyone who has more knowledge in the state about agricultural issues, farming, commercial operations, both, you know, relating to farms, it's Katie Edwards. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Katie so she can explain a little bit on how she drafted the regulations before the council for consideration, and she'll be here to answer questions all night for any residents and councils as they may deem fit.
Katie?
Mr. Polikoff, thank you for the nice recognition. I think Keith was saying all that because I'm sure with this being the only agenda item on here, we wanted to make sure that we could properly explain what it means and make sure that in all of this, that we understand what their proper role is as a municipality. And the common question that we always get when we talk about any type of change of the code that may impact agriculture is, how does it impact things like the Right to Farm Act or the Agricultural Lands and Practices Act? So with that said, what I thought would be helpful is just to go through and give a brief explanation so we can present the ordinance in the proper context. It was very important to us to look at the existing statutes and those protections for agriculture, how agriculture is defined, what's protected, what's not, and also make sure that we could include in it some nuisance mitigation and make sure that from a land use and a planning perspective, that we provide things that would make sure that your neighbors aren't going to be calling code enforcement, that those individuals that are engaged in a livelihood may continue to use their land in accordance with the code and also with input from the council, and we'll get into that on the newly created and defined definition for commercial landscape operations. And also in all of this, central to it is making sure that it is respectful of the Right to Farm Act. So with that, what is the Right to Farm Act? At its core, what it says is a city may not adopt any ordinance, regulation, rule, or policy to prohibit, restrict, regulate, or otherwise limit an activity of a bona fide farm operation on land classified as agriculture. What does that mean and why is that important? When we talk about what land classified as agriculture is, we're talking about land where the property appraiser comes out and under his duty and his authorities, he defines lands as non-agricultural and agricultural. So if you get your trim notices and on your trim notice you see you may have your exemptions listed, and you may see homestead, you may see senior, widower, veterans alike, you might also see agricultural. That means that the property appraiser has classified all or a portion of your property based on agriculture, and that's defined on the various uses, those uses that are protected and defined under state statute. What do we talk about? We're talking about bona fide farming operations. At its core, it's the intent to earn a profit. So if you're engaged in the production, whether it's livestock, whether it's plants, and you have the intent to earn a profit, doesn't mean that you're making money, but it means that you're operating essentially a business and you've got the intent to raise some type of a defined agricultural commodity on that land. What it doesn't protect, and this is the important distinction, are the retail end. You may see individuals that maybe are engaged in the landscape business. We define that in the code we're going to further explain as individual operations, and it could be you incorporated or you as an individual landscaper, perhaps a landscape architect, or maybe you just have a landscape business where you're going out to somebody else's property. Maybe you're doing lawn mowing, maybe you're doing installation and maintenance of vegetation like trees, maybe it's a tree trimming business. We recognize that there is an absolute need for those types of entities and businesses, especially here in Broward County, and obviously you have to have a place. Our goal is not to be restrictive or intrusive, but to make sure that from a planning perspective that we have some semblance of a way to mitigate any type of a nuisance and also allow for you to operate your business within the confines of both state law, county, and local code. The ordinance that you have before you tonight does a couple of things, and it also incorporates some new things that we have identified that were emerging items in agriculture, and we'll explain that as well. So what we do is we provide that the existing plant nurseries that want to use a portion of their property for the retail sales, or for what we're going to talk about, these commercial landscape maintenance operations, that they should be afforded an opportunity to use their property for these accessory uses. We make sure that we outline which zoning areas that they're most appropriate in, and the owner obtains a certificate of use and a special exception. We also provide that those individuals come back before the council, we give some generous time periods for compliance for what otherwise be a non-conforming use, and make sure that we have a procedure to come forward and say, look, I am using my property for this particular use. Let's say it's a landscape business. Again, you could be receiving material, trees, shrubs grown by somebody else, and you're doing installation, maintenance, tree trimming, lawn maintenance, whatever the case may be. You come back before the council, you say, hey, I'm in this zoning district, I'm allowed to be able to use this, I've got to be able to get a special exception permit, and I need to get this certificate of use. Your staff will walk you through the process and procedures for doing just that. And I will say, in looking at other municipalities and counties, what we're doing here is novel because you will see a lot of municipalities don't even allow for this type of procedure, they just let out prohibit it. And I think that you'll look at that if you look at other municipalities in Broward and see how hard it is to find the zoning category that allows for landscape operations. We define commercial landscape maintenance operations, a person engaged in the installation, removal, and maintenance of plants and plant products on other properties. That definition was carefully crafted in consideration of the two things that I began with, one is the Right to Farm Act, and two is bona fide agriculture. If you're a landscape operation and you're doing just that, you're taking somebody else's materials and you're simply going out and you're providing a service where you're doing installation, maintenance, tree trimming, and the like, if you're not getting a bona fide agricultural classification from the property appraiser, you're not agriculture. And I want to make that very clear because we're trying to make sure that we're respectful of the Right to Farm Act and at the same time, provide some vehicle for those landscape maintenance operations to exist under the code and have a process and procedure that's not burdensome. The other new item that you'll notice in here is cottage foods. State law has recently recognized that cottage foods are an emerging industry. And what does that mean? The individual that maybe has a mango grove, or they're growing carambolas or avocados, they may want to produce jams, jellies, pies, the like. It's an accessory use and additional source of income. State law defines it as the preparation of farm products in an unlicensed kitchen that are sold directly to consumers without a permit from the State Department of Agriculture, and they're in compliance with state statutes. This term does not include products sold wholesale. We've used the exact definition from state statute to provide for town residents who do fit this category to be able to do this service and be able to produce farm products known as cottage foods. Farm product, again, we use the same definition set forth in state statute. Landscape materials, trying to be as consistent as what's currently here in your code, the landscape materials are items sold by a plant nursery that are accessory to plants and plant products like stepping stones, river rocks, cap rocks, tree bracing kits, mulch, topsol, and fertilizer. We got input from the last committee hearing and added two terms, which I have over here in front of me, I apologize. We got some very good input regarding pergolas and pavers. So those things would not be incidental to retail nursery sales. That would also include, and again, this is the no, not incidental list, lawn furniture, picnic tables, gazebos, playground equipment, pools and hot tubs, household goods, rugs. Basically, you're not going to be having a Home Goods or Marshalls next to your, your plant nursery retail sales. Plant nursery, and I think this, this is a very good thing for the town. We make sure that we again, respect and follow state statute and the Right to Farm Act. Plant nursery is a person that has a valid certificate of registration from the FDACs for the sale and distribution of any nursery stock. Why is that important? I would point out, if you don't have that and you're selling plant materials, you're in violation of state law. So we're simply marrying what's in state law with respect to plant nursery, and that's your nursery registration certificate. Plants and plant products, again, same definition, nursery, nursery stock. Here we have something that's new, and then again, that respects the differentiation between what's a nursery and what's not in terms of protected ancillary uses. Plant nursery retail sales means a nursery that sells plants and plant products or landscape materials directly to the public, and that's the key. We're not talking about wholesale. These are direct-to-the-public sales at a specific location with established hours of operations. So that's your retail component. The term does not include the sale of plants grown on the property for wholesale to a broker or other person for resale. So if you're a nursery that's wholesale and fits that definition, no worries. We define the process for the special exception use. So we look at the compatibility, at nuisance mitigation, making sure that you're not going to be getting calls from the neighbors complaining about all sorts of things that we'll get into with the input from the citizen committee. The commercial landscape maintenance operations. The applicant goes and makes an application for the special exception permit. The town provides a form. It's up to the business owner or the person applying for it to demonstrate how it will be conducted in a manner that is consistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhood and will not create a nuisance. You list the hours of operations, your site plan, your building size, making sure you have adequate parking for employees, including handicap parking, which is the law, that's ADA, parking, any restrooms, ingress and egress for vehicular traffic, setbacks from the street, and outdoor equipment of screening and storage. One of the other issues that was brought up was as it relates to yard trash and debris and the storage. Broward County is very on point with how they deal with this, and the creation of a transfer station, which many of you that are in the landscape business know, that's some serious stuff from both DEP, from the county, when it comes to storing and transporting any type of yard trash or waste, that triggers a whole other type of review in a land use that's not contemplated by this code. That is an overview of how we've gone about creating the differentiation between the retail end of otherwise bona fide ag operations to provide for these types of accessory uses, whether it's partially or wholly on the property, and the process for making sure that individuals can use their property for these purposes with the proper safeguards.
Thank you. Mayor, does any member of the town council have any questions for myself or Katie Edwards prior to opening it up for the public?
No, I'm sure we will when the public's done speaking, but I don't know that we do it this time. I think we're good for the moment. So, public comment.
Mayor, so far we have...
All right, let me, let me jump in here. Anybody that has not filled out one of these forms to speak, feel free to fill it out if you want to get up and talk, so it's not a problem.
I believe we have, we have a total of four speakers, but I think one of them is for the regular meeting, so the other speakers that we have are Jim Lasky. You here for the regular meeting or for this meeting, Mr. Lasky?
I'm just, I'm just...
Please step forward.
I'm a little confused on this. So this is not public comment, this is comment on an item.
This is comment on the nursery ordinance.
So do they need to fill out a form? We don't normally do that.
We usually have... All right, so, and so we can just jump up?
Yeah.
Just state your name and address.
So you don't need to fill out a form, you can just jump up and speak, so...
But, but for our record, just state your name and address. Jim, if you could...
Roll the mic around to you.
Jim Lasky, 188th Avenue. You need any more information?
Yeah, we're good.
But anyway, Ms. Edwards, I know we've talked before about some things.
And by the way, we're going to take a list of any questions that everyone asked, and don't, pause this time, and we will address them at the end of public comment because it's not going to be a back and forth. So if anyone asks questions, just ask them and we promise to address them.
Okay, great. All right. I'm sure being the background you have, your family with 5,000 acres, and most of the people that ever got you to the place where you are now had real bona fide farms, and there was no question about what was going on, what their major activity was, and you could pretty much guess by driving by how they made a living. But in Southwest Ranches, we seem to have some other little problems with this. We have trash transfer stations. We had three of them going, drum grinders. And guess what they were doing? People would go down to Dade County, pick up the trash, bring it back here, mulch it up, and who knows what happened? I know of one instance where it went to Indian Town to be burned. Okay? We've, we've got to control what's going on here that everybody's complaining about. All these guys from Hialeah, Opelika, which were within Dade County that can't operate down there are coming up here because it's cheap. They take a one-acre piece of property and they put how many people on there paying so much in cash every month. We don't even have the requirement to have a business use tax, a business, or business tax, anyway. All right, a permit to operate a business in whatever field you're trying to do. In Dade County, it runs around $600 and change for every truck and trailer you have. Why do you think that's so? Because there were so many guys going around doing all kinds of things that they had to have some way to control who they were. You have to have stickers on your vehicle. In order to get a sticker on your vehicle, you have to have insurance, proof of insurance. The principles of the organization are fingerprinted. I mean, we got guys that go to a Tom Bum up here with a big tank and a duly, and they start fraudently charging fuel...
Your time's up, boss.
And reselling it. You don't want me to go on?
No.
This is pretty inclusive.
I want to allow other people to have an opportunity.
Okay, that's fine.
You can have my three minutes, sir.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay.
All right, hold on. We can't be doing that because then everybody's going to just roll that around.
Isn't that part of Robert's Rules of Order? He can delegate his time to me?
I'd rather not do that.
And I thought we did that kind of stuff.
I'd rather not do that. Let's let everybody have an opportunity to speak.
Okay, great.
George Kales, 6721 Hancock Road. My property adjoins the power poles to the south. Pretty soon, we're going to be voting on Amendment Six, which has something to do with the victims' rights. And the reason I'm up here is because when I go out my back door right now, I see a shipping container, I see a 55-gallon drum full of, I don't know, gas, I guess, I see 10 garbage full bags, I don't know what's in the garbage bags, I see a broken tractor, I see a junk pile, and worst of all, I see six loads of horse manure. Now, I'm, I'm reading some of these rules here, and it says that the compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and avoids the creation of a nuisance. I read the outdoor display of incidental landscape material must be screened from view on adjacent properties. I read the distribution that detracts from the peaceful enjoyment of value of surrounding and nearby properties arising from any of the following. One of them is odor, and you don't have to take my... One of them is odor, and you don't have to take my word for it, you could check with the code enforcer Julio, Julio. He was there, he took a whiff. You, you, and the impact on adjacent properties. Okay? Now, with all, kudos to Robert over there. I did complain about it because the first time it happened, I came out in the morning, and there were three containers, shipping containers, and there was a huge 40 foot truck advertising, "We buy properties." Okay? So I complained to Robert, and within three days, two of them were gone and the truck was gone. However, I'm still sitting there with the shipping container. Today, there was two more loads of horse manure.
Your time's up, sorry, boss.
Okay, well, you got the right idea. You got the idea. But to put everything in a nutshell, quite frankly, is what this young lady was saying, you have the investor that comes in, he puts in his carrot patch, and he gets his tax exempt.
All right, come on.
Me, I've been paying my taxes for 50 years in the same place, am I...
We, we get it.
Okay, you got it.
I was going to have a large list this evening of situations, but when I asked for a copy of the revised ordinance that was coming before the board, the council, I was given only the underlined finished presentation copy that you guys got. What I wanted was the underlined strike through copy, which had the corrections from the cop plan board for the final. I didn't get that, so... I am not going to say anything specific, except that we have enough problems with this because it deals only with commercial entities. It does not deal with the rights and privileges and expectations of the average citizen, who is, as we call it, a non-commercial farmer, and we have that definition, which is what other people call, which I consider an insult to individuals, a hobby farmer. The non-commercial farmer, his rights and privileges within our town are much greater, I believe, than in other municipalities, and those rights need to be protected. And they are not being protected, they're being totally ignored. And the only option you have under this ordinance, because it deals only with commercial, and I will touch on one item of that, you have two types of commercial farms. You have those that have the agricultural exemption, and you also have those, and this is a much more nebulous and harder area, those that could acquire the agricultural exemption but do not have it. And I believe that is correct the way I said it. May I continue?
Yeah, I'd...
For one minute.
Can't do it.
Okay.
I'm not allowing anybody else, so I can't allow you. No additional public comment?
Okay, I've been here for 55 years plus, and I've watched a lot of changes, and I'm beginning to feel like we're headed towards Weston. I really do. I don't have a nursery, but I fight for them. Why do I fight for them? Because they're part of our, our being. We're, we're, that's what we are. The road stops here, the pavement stops here, we're agricultural, we're dark skies, but all of a sudden, we're not so dark skies. We have a lot of mega mansions moving in, and the little guy is being pushed and he's being shoved out. And he came in here originally because he could make a living. He bought a piece of land, it's bigger than a, than living in town, and he was able to grow his crops and sell and work a job. Some, some of these people work two jobs, plus they farm. And now, we're making more rules, more laws, not to, to make them help, to help them, we're making it worse. And as far as coming before this board, I kind of have to chuckle because they're going to pay to come before the board, and they can be knocked right out of the ballpark by the vote. They don't know that yet. It's not like they're going to come before the board and the board is going to listen to them and say, "Oh, you want to do that? Because if the neighbors don't like it, and maybe there's a mega mansion next to them who doesn't want them there to begin with," he's going to say, "Nope, I don't want them there, and you will vote him out." You will tell him, "Nope, you can't do it, the neighbors don't want you." That, that's not right. You need to look at this bill. You're going to approve this thing, and we're going to have to live by it.
You're up. Okay, thanks.
Hi, I'm just going to read because otherwise I'll get tongue tied, so pardon me. Sue Miller, 4810 Southwest 133rd Avenue, on the next street on the one acre lots. So, Southwest Ranches, open space, preserving our rural lifestyle. We became a town, as stated in our town charter, Article One, in order to preserve, protect, and enhance the quality of life and residential character of Southwest Ranches. At this time, the zoning for the rural estate areas had a restriction of 2.3 acres or larger for nurseries. Despite our many future land use element policies that speak of compatibility and protection whenever possible of all existing and planned rural, again, residential areas, we removed this restriction in 2005, thus setting up the scenario that we have today, mixed use zoning. This change was made despite issues already arising with nurseries. In January of 2004, that's a really long time ago, there were comments from residents in the town council meetings stating that they were concerned, quote, "about commercial nurseries and the products they are selling." Another resident commented later in 2004 that we all wanted to keep the town the same. I was original resident, so I agree with that. But he said now nurseries are not growing what they are selling and are becoming retail stores. Well, apparently, the nursery issue became even more of a problem by 2008. So this has been an ongoing issue. Staff at that point asked the town council to prepare an ordinance to reinstate the acreage provisions, and I quote, dang, from a March 6, 2008 memo, "Due to the impact that these commercial enterprises are having on the residential districts." Unfortunately, for some unknown reasons, that change didn't go through. Today, we have the situation where apparently any individual can purchase a one acre home site...
We got to button it up, sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay. We'll be back at the end of the next week.
Come on up.
Good evening, I'm Daniel Perdia. I live on 63rd Street and 188th, between 190th. I also own Tadala Nursery. It's a 17 and a half acre wholesale nursery. When you were describing about the generation, you described my family. My dad bought two and a half acres...
I got four generations.
20 years ago, 20 years later, we're second generation, we got kids, we got kids growing in the town. We are involved with the town. We're wholesale, some of you know my company. My question is, is when is this going to end? If this passes, what's next? What's next? And that's what worries me. Right now, I worry about the landscapers, the retail, whatever you say, because they're, we're brothers, we work together. But what's next? Like, when are we, what's, when's Weston coming? When are we going to become Weston? That's all I wanted to state.
If anyone wants my minute, I'll give mine.
Come on up.
My name is Chris Milmo. I live in Rolling Oaks. I lived here for 28 years. I just got a couple of questions. I don't know what a nuisance is, or if you could give me a definition of nuisance that you have in your...
They, they will when you're done.
Okay.
She's going to go back and forth.
I need a definition of a nuisance.
Okay.
And then a size, like a landscaper. To me, you're, the way it sounds is two guys in a truck is a landscaper, not 60 guys and 50 trucks. Is that a landscaper too? I just want to know how our lives change. I, I understand, I, everybody's got, there's two sides here, I, I can see it, but I want to know, I, I don't, I've been to three meetings or four meetings and never bothered nobody in my life, and I'm here on one issue. And I just said, how does my life change, living on a cul-de-sac in Rolling Oaks for 28 years, and then all of a sudden, I, I just like, I have kids in the street, I got a, I have people that I don't even know in my neighborhood, I got them, I, who knows? Like you said, what, a license? I, I don't, I don't know. I just want answers on that. That's all. The way we, four people on my street, and we're all here, and it's just an everyday nightmare. You guys tell me, I've been to meetings, they said seven to seven. Does that six to eight, or in the middle of the night, two in the morning, three in the morning, trucks are coming down our street? Live on a cul-de-sac, I can hear everybody coming, my bedroom's right there. I just want to know when we, I need some answers to why or how this is possible. I run businesses, I pay my taxes, and I'm, I, I don't know, I just need answers so, so I can rest assured, or if I want to sell my property, nobody's going to buy it, nobody would even try. So it's like a beaten call.
I'm coming.
Come on up.
Hi. Everybody knows me.
Say your name anyway.
My name, James McDonald, Proscapes. So a lot of the references that are being made are about my business, and my philosophy is go big or go home. I bought land on the cul-de-sac that just was just mentioned, and it's 12 acres, and it was previously prior to me purchasing it three years ago, for 20 years, it was a landscape installation maintenance company. And it was called Garden Leader, and that's where I purchased it from through Joe Caprio, the realtor. I paid $3 million for the land. The land already had 6,000 trees on it, which is still there, we've used some of them. It all had a bona fide sprinkler system with a pump out of the lake. It had all of the gas tanks already there, double lined and approved by Broward County. And we actually took over the land to make it and continue to use it as a bona fide property that it was used for prior, and that it was permitted by the town to use for, and the county. So my big concern is that I made an investment. Yes, we have a lot of trucks, yes, we have a lot of employees, but the way we operate our business, we actually bring containers of plants onto our property, we repot some if we move them to different sizes, we keep them on the wood sprinklers, we grow them, and our primary business is installation, where we take the stuff onto trucks, we go out and install it, and then we maintain it as part of the contractual agreement we have with our customers. So, with being said, the nuisance was already there, okay? One of the other neighbors actually grew up across the street, his father owned the land across the street and sold him his land that he currently owns now. Just because you have a family with two little kids, you can't change and, and take down the nuclear power plant that was already next door. So the reality is, you know, today we had a major issue, with two seconds, our street was blocked by the neighbor, so our trucks couldn't drive down the street, and we called the police. So it's really getting out of control, and I think something needs to be done about it, and we need to have proper enforcement, not selective enforcement.
All right, Jamie, thanks.
You're welcome.
Council, Tommy Pender, 4511 Southwest 133rd. Apparently, we got a situation here that an individual can come in and purchase a piece of land, be it one acre, which, these aren't really one acre, they're builder's acres, so we're not even a full acre to do what they're doing. To come in and fill it as high as he wants to, and a lot of the problems I had with it living next door to it is the fact that inspections weren't done right between Central Broward and the town. That needs to come together and be online. Hopefully, I can help with that. But, you know, something needs to be done to control this. I mean, it shouldn't have ever been changed from two and a half acres. An acre, a builder's acre even, isn't enough room to do anything. So somehow, this needs to go back to the way it was in 2004, or whenever it was. Thank you.
Hi, Council, John Eastman. You know what I live with next door to me for years, so, you know, anyway. I wanted to talk about the ordinance, and I think that if there's any special exemptions, they should be shall issue for the existing nurseries. In other words, just like getting a gun permit, it should be shall issue. You shouldn't have any question about an existing nursery should be bumped out. You need to work with them on, on the specifics, but you shouldn't just come off right in the beginning and, you know, make them come out and spend a lot of money and then get turned down. So when they come in to see you, and if, somebody's been here for 30 years, that means something. So we need to respect our neighbors. Most of the nurseries in town get along with their neighbors. We do have a few exceptions, and, you know, we have current laws on our books, and I think that some of those are kind of not being enforced. But I really think that this whole thing needs to be looked at a little bit longer. It's been in the development phase, you know, for a couple of meetings that I've been to, and I know Katie Edwards is an expert on it, and, you know, her, her input is invaluable here. So with the amount of people here on both sides, I think it should probably be looked at a little bit more. Some of it's a little bit onerous to existing businesses. Certainly, people coming into the town, trying to set up a nursery, you know, maybe we need to make sure where they are is not impacting their neighbors. We have people that have been here for 30, 40 years that have had people build next to them, and then they start complaining about it. So, you know, I live next to the airport, but I want the airport to go away. Thank you.
Pull that mic down to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
I didn't bring papers, I really wasn't expecting to speak tonight, but after that fake news that Mr. McDonald spread here, I have to get up and say something, okay? My name is Gloria Pope. I live on 60th Street. I'm a neighbor right across the street from Chris Milmo, and my other neighbors were all sitting together here as a group. We put up with this BS every single day, except Sunday, because they don't work on Sunday. Okay? This man has trucks with trailers, he can't get around the bridge, he goes almost to the fence to our neighbor that's across the street from him, and has torn up all the land there, right up to our driveway. They've knocked our mailbox over twice, have never once offered to buy it. It's still sitting there with the, the door hanging off of it. We have a new one, but why put it out there? He's just going to hit it again. And that's not the only thing that he's hit, okay? He has a good 30 trucks. You've all seen them, those aluminum looking dump trucks that pull the big trailers. He has at least 30 of those that go out every day. Before they go out, his 60 or more workers have to come in in their cars. They speed down our streets, they start at six in the morning. If the gates aren't open, they park in front of Chris's house until the gates are open so that they can go in. Okay? I live across the street, I hear the click, 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 when they go over the, the little thing when they come out of their property to go over the bridge. I don't know how they sleep over there. I really don't. They have the, the, the backup noise. They have three 500 gallon tanks there that they fill three times a week, they come and fill those gas tanks. When this whole thing started, they, they had an agreement that they made with, I thought was with the town lawyers, that they were not to bring any debris back on the property. They still do. They don't dump it, but they bring it in. They were not supposed to use the gas for any vehicle that left the property. They don't have property that has vehicles on it, where they're going to have a tractor...
I'm sorry, your time's up.
Okay, you get the picture, okay? They're bad neighbors, they're a nuisance, and they need to go. They're a nuisance and they need to go.
Any additional public comment? Okay, good. Right behind you.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198th Terrace. You know, I ran a pretty large scale commercial nursery operation. We probably, and this was retail, this, we probably had 85,000,000 liners. I mean, we're talking about two gallon, right on up to 55 gallon with big palms in them. We had about 7 million orchids. This was O'Donnell Farms. They're not there anymore. We were up on Lyons Road. And we were full service landscape maintenance as well. And we were completely legal as far as then Broward County and a little while later Pompano, not Pompano, excuse me, Coconut Creek was concerned. Now, what concerns me about the jeopardy that any landscape nurseries are in right now is if they're selling retail, they're breaking the law. The way I read the ordinance, this doesn't affect wholesale nurseries whatsoever. They can continue on. It's the retail nurseries that we're concerned about. Now, with the retail nurseries, somebody, Gay mentioned McMansions coming in and building right next door. Unless this goes through and people can operate their business legally, that McMansion, a 30-year business, can be shut down. I don't think that's such a good idea. Now, if they have to comply with some rules to protect the neighborhood and not bucket grinders, Jim mentioned bucket grinders. I remember, you can't run that thing seven by 24 in somebody's backyard. That's not right. But I wouldn't want to have a business like that, invest my life in it, my family, four generations, five, six generations, have somebody move in next door and put them out of business. I'd rather they have a path that can become a legal business in our town. And I hope you all look at it as a regulatory issue, not all the passion. Because these people deserve to have their businesses. And honestly, if you vote against it, I think you're doing the wrong thing. And I really wonder what influences you to vote against it. Thank you.
Luke Hansford, 5900 Southwest 185th Way. You guys just had mentioned that you were taking down some of these questions to consider. So I wanted to just offer a few questions maybe to chew on. Is this whole thing about one or two issues or businesses or people? Or is this about a lot of issues? Because I've been to the last meeting in this one and it seems to really be about one issue or one area and not all over the place widespread. If you push out the landscapers, who's going to buy plants from us? Something to consider. You know, there's a lot of landscapers out West, a lot of nurseries out West for that reason. If they're gone, who buys plants from us? They get pushed into another city or they get pushed east. I just paid 1.1 million dollars for my property two years ago. It's all plants, wall to wall. You know, all I do is plants. And if I lose the landscapers, I could be in big trouble. So I know your situation's tough. I don't have an answer on that one. But for the rest of, I know a lot of landscapers that are in here. Most of them are good guys and they are willing to work. You want us to put up walls, fences, hedges, you know, whatever it may be. Most guys are pretty cool. I know a lot of them. I got dozens of them that buy from me. And really, they're flexible in a lot of ways. I know some of the stuff is not right, stop it. But for the rest of it, the rule has always kind of been if your neighbor complains, Julio is going to visit you. You try to work it out with them. And that has been the case in a lot of ways. So thank you.
How you doing? Doug Pope, also live in Rolling Oaks. Been there since 88, okay? Has this always been a nursery? No. Heck, Stevie B, the Army stinger, used to live on that property where Proscape is, okay? Garden Leader was a nursery. Nurseries are what we allow. Landscapers are what we allow. A place that has plants that's on 12 acres, that fills enough plants to fill that area behind your desk, is not a landscaper or a nursery. This is, as Mr. McDonald has stated, a staging area for his company. They don't grow plants. They dump their trash. Their fuel tanks that they have on property is to fill up their lawn mowers because that's what's in their trucks. It's a lawn maintenance company. It is not a nursery. It is not a landscaper. It is lawn maintenance, all right? These guys came in after we lived here. We've had nurseries. We have nurseries at the end of our street. That's not the problem. The problem is we have people abusing the privileges that we allow people to come into this town to do business. It's not, gentlemen, over here, that is a nursery or landscaper. This is a lawn maintenance company with nothing but trucks that run up and down our road every day, six days a week, okay? Lord knows, I've taken enough photos of them and taken photos of our poor road that in since 88 has only been repaved once, is completely trashed because our roads are not designed for this commercial traffic that I have running up and down my street six days a week, okay? I'm all for nurseries. I'm for landscaping. Don't have a problem with them. I have a problem with people abusing the policies that we have and saying their company is something else when it's nothing but a lawn maintenance company.
Hello. I'm Linda Flack, 70th Place.
Speaking on the mic a little bit so we can hear you.
Linda Flack, 70th Place. We purchased a property in 1996 and we started our nursery. And we started our landscaping business. And we've grown. We've bought more property on that street. And we complied with all of the nursery requirements with the county and the state and have all the licenses for our nursery. And we also make sure our neighbors are not bothered in any way. We don't start work before they, before anybody goes to school. And we certainly don't come back at any time that the buses are running. I think that we were a nursery landscaping company before this was a town, that's for sure. And this is going to affect us. It's going to affect us tremendously. We've been in business 22 years. So I really feel like there has to be some kind of consideration for companies like mine that do care about our neighbors. And we live here. And the ones that abuse it, obviously it is terrible. I mean, I've witnessed it too. So I just don't know if you can put all of your decisions into one size fits all because I don't, I don't believe that we are. I think that if there was a problem previously, it would have been addressed before now. But I think there's something going on here with one company that is abusing it and ruining it for everyone else. Please consider us. When you make your decision, please consider us. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, public comment is closed. Back to the counsel, Keith.
Yeah. First, I want to speak just immediately to the last speaker because she asked if this is going to impact us. If you are a, what you're doing today violates the current code, okay? What you're currently doing is illegal in the town. So what Bob Hartman stated and a couple of other people previously stated, what we're offering you is a path to make legal what you've been doing for the last 30 years. Because Broward County never permitted what you're doing. The town of Southwest Ranch has never permitted what you're doing. It violates the code today. So if you are a good operator and your neighbors like you, all you're doing is applying to the town council to say, let me legally do what I've been doing illegally for all these years. And assuming that what you're saying is true, and I don't know you, so I assume it is, or I would have heard maybe complaints over, you know, the years, that what they're doing is giving you a path to legalize your business. So I just want to make sure that that's understood, that presently your operation is 100% in violation of the code. You are not allowed, you know, one thing that I was going over with Robert earlier, one thing that you're not allowed to do is if you're a landscape business, you're not allowed to bring those trucks back to your place every single day because those trucks only can farm the property that you're on. I assume that you bring your trucks back to your establishment because you stated that you don't do it during school or before school in the morning. So, but what you're doing doesn't impact your neighbors from what you're saying. So you would need this ordinance to be adopted in order to legalize what you're doing today. Because if the code was enforced the way it's written today, you'd be found in violation and your property would have to close. So I just want to make sure that at least, you know, for someone like you brings it up, what this ordinance does, it legalizes your business, okay? That's what this does. It enables you to come to the town and say, I've been doing this for 30 years. I'm not impacting anyone. Do you have a problem with me maintaining my business the way it is? Assuming the council agrees, you've just grandfathered yourself and your business is legalized. So I just want to explain this in case there's any confusion out there of what this does. This gives you a path to legalize what you're doing today. That's all that this does.
But Keith, let me jump in here.
Sure.
Does it not take a unanimous consent of the council to pass any of this stuff moving forward?
I don't know what's going to happen with charter amendments and the like. But it is possible that a unanimous vote of the council would be permissible. But would you think in her case that the council wouldn't support her operation?
You know, I don't know enough about her situation or her case to answer that. But what I would tell you is, my concern is a couple of different things. And that is, if it takes a unanimous consent of this council and somebody up here doesn't like you, or they're friends with somebody else and they don't know you or whatever, and they allow this guy to do it, but they don't allow that guy to do it, and it's the same thing. I mean, how does that work with a council that you have to have a 5-0 vote on? So I would tell you that having a 5-0 vote up here in that regard, in that relationship, is insanity. You're not giving a fair opportunity to everybody, whether it be right now, the charter change for land use that's going to be on the amendment is for the town council to buy and sell real estate is three to two right now. They want to change it to 5-0, okay? The other thing they want to change is any land use change of any real estate, whether it's CF community facility or commercial or whatever it might be, would require a 5-0 vote of this council. All you need is one person to say, no, it doesn't happen. Same thing applies that if you come in, if this thing goes forward and passes and it has that 5-0 vote, all it takes is one person up here to tank it. Yeah, we can't go back and forth. Um, yes and no. I got to explain that later. But anyhow, so Keith, is that not accurate, what I've said?
Okay, we're jumping around, but you are absolutely correct that in the event that the charter amendment is adopted to require a 5-0 vote, then it would require unanimous vote of the commission to approve a special exception.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so it's back to us.
There are a couple of other questions. Katie, did you want to address?
Yeah, Katie's going to answer some questions.
Thank you. I wanted to just clarify existing code because I think we're really mixing. We're talking about the various land uses to the last speaker, Ms. Flack. If I heard you correctly, and this may apply to other individuals, and I apologize for singling you out, but wanted to make sure we clarify. Under your current code, those sale of farm products, which include plant products for wholesale, under the code, if you are zoned under ag and rural districts, that is a permitted use. The town is not shutting you down. The use that's not protected as bona fide agriculture and thus not under the Right to Farm Act would be what we're talking about at the retail end of it or this newly created commercial landscape maintenance operation. So I did want to point that out to be very clear to those wholesale nurseries and those individuals that may be just growing mango trees, palms or the like, that that use remains protected. The town is not taking away that permitted agricultural use.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that clarified it. A wholesale nursery is 100% not being touched by this ordinance. The only thing that's being touched is a commercial operation and a commercial landscape operation. So, which is if you do a landscape operation today that leaves the property to maintain properties, that's a commercial landscape operation. And that's what the code does not allow today, but what this will help to regulate if it's adopted.
Okay. Back to the council. Steve, you want to go?
Yeah, I'll go. First of all, I really appreciate everybody coming out tonight. It's great to see everybody here in really a town hall type of environment where we can hear all sides, hear everybody's opinion and be able to gain the wisdom from everybody. So thank you for taking the time to come out. I want to just restate a couple of things and be clear about a couple of things. Number one is that their, this ordinance in no way is in any way designed to hurt those nurseries that this town was built on. As a matter of fact, we, you know, we're here, it protects them and any inference that this would hurt the true nurseries of this town that this, the town was built on is absolutely false and incorrect. So I just want to get that off the table. If that is not correct, please interrupt me and correct me. So, so let's clear that off. What this is about is commercial operations. It's commercial operations that are operating as a nursery, as an agricultural type of operation. Now, there are a lot of those that operate in town that do an exceptional job at it. And I'm going to pick on one because I have so much respect for this individual. And so I'm just going to go out. And that is, I live on 195th Terrace. At the end of my street is a very large commercial operation, Land Works. Rick Spears runs that. And you know what? It's a beautiful operation. It's right on my road. If anybody should be complaining about it, it should be me because it's on my road. I got to pass it every day. But you know what? It is, it's, it's, I don't see what goes there, you know? It has beautiful landscape around it. All of his equipment goes directly out onto Griffin Road. It's in no way hurts our local community there. A couple of times I've had issues. And I've given Ricky a call and I said, Ricky, can you, this is not right. I'm hearing neighbors complain about this. And within a week or two, boom, it's taken care of. It's gone away. It's happened twice. Both times, immediately it was taken care of. It's because, it's because he gets it. It's because he's been here forever. He grew up out here and he gets it. And he wouldn't put anything there that he wouldn't want to have next to his house. That's, that's pretty much a quote from him. And that's the way he acts and that's the way he goes about his business. So I in no way would want this, and that's why the special exception is there, is for individuals like that that get it, that are here, that respect the residents, that respect the communities that they're in and that are there and are in tune with the rural lifestyle. This is not about one nursery or two nurseries. There are several nurseries that, I'm just going to say, don't get it, that abuse the privilege and that hurt the neighborhoods that they're in. I want to show some videos. The first video you're going to see was actually taken in May. So it's a little dated. But the rest of the videos were taken in the last 72 hours. So this one here, it's early in the morning. This is, this is when, you know, you would like to be able to wake up quietly or maybe to the chickens or something, but... like to be able to wake up quietly, or maybe to the chickens, or something, but there's this huge commercial operation that's going on. Workers are arriving. The lights are on, the backup beepers are going, the fueling is going on. This is a commercial operation. That's my only point. I'm not saying that these are bad people. What I'm saying is this is a clear commercial operation. All right. Next video, this was taken this afternoon. I just want you to get a feel for what goes on, on a daily basis. The trucks are lined up, coming in at the end of the day. And this is not, this is not like the peak moment. This is, this is, this is just, this is just how the day goes. This is just how the day goes. And I'm sorry that you have to sit through this for a few minutes, but there's folks here that have to sit through this every day. So I'm going to play through it. I'm going to play through it. There's a traffic jam in Southwest Ranches, and you're looking at it.
One lane bridge.
That's correct. That's correct. And I made that point, right? I made that point, that this is not everybody. To Delia, you guys do great. Just watch. Let's not make comments. I just want you to watch, and kind of soak it in. There's too much traffic, it has to stop. There's too much traffic. It's got to stop. It's got to wait.
Let me know when I can interject on your video.
As I get down. This isn't a repeat, this is another time, the same time, today. I mean, if this isn't a commercial business, then I don't know what a commercial business The next thing I want you to look at is a series of video clips, pictures. Note the time on this, this is 1:00 in the morning. It's already happening. Now it's around 5, a little before 6. Just going to page through these things. Every one of these pictures is set off by a motion detector. What that means is every one of these pictures, a vehicle has passed by the front of their property. Every one of these pictures. This is all before the sun comes up. Every one of these, most of these here, as you see, they're regular vehicles, these are workers coming in. Every one of these. You can see the cars are lined up, coming in. Look at that. I mean, I just don't think people realize the volume without seeing something like this. Now the trucks are starting to go out. Every one of these, a unique vehicle.
This is on 108th.
No, this is in Rolling Oaks.
Should have played that when he was here.
He's at Weston Sleep.
What kind of chemicals are in the chemical tank?
Who knows? I don't know. So I'm going to let you watch that. I want to make a few more comments. So, I didn't count all the pictures, but I did count the pictures over a 124-hour period. 217 vehicles came in and out of that one property. 217 vehicles. They're, it's a dead-end street. I mean, they're only going one place. You know, we did a traffic study, well, we do traffic studies all the time. And on those traffic studies, they do estimates. And they estimate that for a normal residential property, that it generates nine trips a day. Nine trips daily. Seems high to me, but that's what the average works out to be. I guess that's, you know, soccer practice, and grocery store, and this, that, and the other thing. Nine trips a day. This one property is generating 217 trips a day. What do you think that does to the roads? What do you think that does to the infrastructure there? You know, we just went through a very difficult budget process, where we had to raise taxes. And part of that is the infrastructure to redo our roads. What do you think this is doing to our local roads? What do you think it would happen if every property in our town generated 217 trips a day? How long do you think our roads would last? We would have no roads. We would have no roads. Basically, this property is taking up the traffic of 24 residential properties. The equivalent of 24 residential properties. They're paying the taxes of one property. We're paying the rest. If we're upset about our taxes going up, then we need to look at some things we can do to reduce it. And that's part of what this is about. This is not about a particular person, or a particular business. This is about doing something that's fair and right for our town, and frankly, preserves, preserves our rural lifestyle and the nurseries that do it right. I am the biggest proponent of the nurseries that do it right. You guys do it right. So many of you do it right. And yet, this spoils it for everybody. So we've got to make a correction. We just have to make a correction, so that it's fair for everybody. And that's what this is about. If it needs to be tweaked here and there, I'm not saying it's perfect. But what I'm saying is, the way it is today doesn't work. The way it is today, it doesn't work. Look, it's still going on. I could talk for quite a bit longer, and it'd still be going on. It's not right. It's not right to subject that part, those neighbors around there, to that type of abuse. It's just not right. And so we've got to do something about it. And when we do it, we've got to protect the folks that do it right. And that's what this ordinance is all about. Thank you.
Okay. Who would like to go next? Yeah?
I'll go ahead and go, and I love it when Steve goes first, because he basically said a whole lot of things that I would have said. And, you know, I can't agree more with him, that this is, the large nurseries that do it right, this is not about them. This is about the people that are abusing the system. And there's, and it's more than just one, it's several, it's spread out across the town. And we're making a course correction here, and hopefully, it will work out, and maybe some tweaks we have to do down the line. Maybe a year from now, maybe six months, maybe two years from now. But when that time comes, we will be able to do it, because we know, we'll have some history behind it. But right now, the history we've got is not, is not very good for the residents that are, where their life is impacted by this. So I'm in full support of this.
Dee?
I didn't vote for the taxes to go up. I didn't vote for your mileage to go up. Could we have cut more? Maybe. And there's a lot of people out there that probably won't even like to hear this. You know what you lose in your ag exemption? You lose almost a million dollars a year. But that's part of our style, it's part of what we are. We're the rural ranches. They talk about special exceptions. Come in and apply for a special exemption. To make mistakes is human. To hold a grudge is definitely human. I know, I have grudges, and there's a lot of people out there that have grudges against me, and you're never going to stop it. But our job, each one of us sitting up here, is to come up with something that's cohesive and friendly for everybody, to work together. All these people that are here tonight, and I thank you all for coming, because it does, like Steve says, it does send a really special message, that we are coming together, whether we agree or disagree, we're still here together. Someone spoke about garbage in our town, and containers, and broken tractors. Go take a ride out west. You know what you're going to see? Garbage. Tons and tons and tons of manure. Broken tractors everywhere. Rusty old buckets. Things that haven't run in 20 years, it's parked everywhere. Behind the barn, in front of the barn, the side of the barn. It didn't matter. It was, said that what was, what were we influenced by? What would influence me, sitting up here, to do something wrong? Well, I don't think I'm doing anything wrong. I think I'm listening to both sides. I don't, I'm not quite sure how that was meant, influence. I know the issue at hand, I know basically what this is all about, and there's been a couple of serious complaints made. And people living on a half an acre, or even one acre, they should not have to endure this. They're basically living in a subdivision, so to speak. And it's not something that needs to be next to you. You know, whether we take and designate just certain areas, and that's it, that's one thing. This is something that we have different opinions, and I haven't really heard a solution. I would like to see this go back to our comp board. I would like to mash it all out, see what else we can come up with. Because I know, deep in my heart, none of yous want to see anybody hurt. But yet, you feel like you're being hurt. And no one should feel like that. This town was based on nurseries. That's, all that was here was nurseries. They're protected by the state with the ag and everything else. It's tough. You want to make everybody happy. And I do understand, in certain areas, I at one time lived in Deans Ranches. I had horses around me, but that was really it. And that's the way it should have been. You know, if you want to have a horse or two was one thing, but to have a full-blown nursery, no matter what it is, it just seems unreasonable. Do I think it would maybe depreciate property values? Maybe. You know, I haven't done a study, I don't know, I don't think the town has done a study to see if property values have decreased. That special exception that they're talking about, all it takes, I don't know how you can read my mind, but all it takes is one person up here not to want it, with this 5-0 vote that's going on. Just one. That's it, it's done. It's kind of like controlling something. And I don't believe one of us up here have the right to control. We're supposed to be a team, we're supposed to work together, we're supposed to find solutions, or at least it's something comparable to help somebody. And I think most of the people in this town are really good people, they work very hard, and they deserve respect. You, to tell and dictate to somebody what you can do is different than rules. You have to have rules and everything. If you didn't, you know, half you ladies sitting out there, you know, you have kids, you have to have rules. If not, that's it, you lost the game. They'll run right over the top of you. And people do the same thing. And if they're violating a rule, and it's a town rule, and it's something we made, then unfortunately, they have to abide by it. If not, they do get shut down. And I imagine we've gone after a few people that probably said that Robert was their worst nightmare. But that's a good thing. I'm going to leave it at that. Like I said, I think we can come to better solutions. I wasn't happy watching the video. I think that's a little excessive. There's got to be something else that can be done about that. And like I said, my recommendation would be not to vote on this, to send it back to the comp board, and let them beat it out some more, and see if we can come up with another good idea. And if we can't, we're not in no time limit, but if violations are occurring now, then they have to be reinforced. So, that's where I'm going to leave it. Thank you.
Freddie?
She pretty well said what I would have said, too. I agree with what you're saying there. No sense repeating it.
Okay. You were referring to going back to the comp plan board, or no? Yeah, okay. Well anyhow, a variety of things. We've been beating this up for a little while. We have a moratorium on nurseries, and a holding pattering, so they can't do anything right now. They can't expand, no new ones coming in. We've been beating this horse a little while. We haven't, you know, got all the hiccups out of it yet, I don't think. There are issues, we have some, the don't play by the rules sometimes in town. That was excessive, without a doubt, as far as that, but I got to tell you, there was a little extenuating circumstances. Additionally, today, on one of those videos, and I don't know which one it was, but one of them had to call the police about somebody saying they ran air grass on the bridge, and backed up all the vehicles, so they were all there at one time. So, I'm just telling you, somebody...
So it makes it better? You can see all the vehicles at once, or you want to see them sporadically?
I get that, but I'm just trying to say, is that not a true statement that I made?
No, we can't debate this back and forth. You, you know, you have to call order.
Anyhow, here and there, listen, I'm not siding with anybody here. I'm here, listen, that's not it. I'm here to do the right thing. That's, listen, I...
I'm out there at 6:00 in the morning, tomorrow morning, I'll make you breakfast. You sit out there and...
Sir?
I've been out there, and I've been out there early in the morning, believe it or not, and I understand, and I get the issue, okay? But what the problem is, it appears like we're making this small fix for that one item. But what I'm trying to tell you is, I believe the codes are already on the books to fix the problem. I don't think we have to make new rules to do that.
And why are we still doing it?
Well, I got to tell you, it's at the code hearing, hold on.
Why are we arguing?
Okay, I just want to tell you where it's at. It's at a code hearing, it's been brought before the code hearing, and it's, the magistrate made a ruling, correct me if I'm wrong, Keith, the magistrate made a ruling against this issue, if they did not, and I'm assuming they're going to appeal it, but I don't know. But is that accurate, Keith, related to this issue and this item?
The, you're referring to Proscape specifically?
All the video you saw on TV was Proscape.
Proscapes went before the special magistrate, not as relates to those trucks, as it related to individuals parking their vehicles at the establishment, okay? The special magistrate made a ruling that those individuals can no longer come and park their vehicles on that property. The item relating to the trucks, Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think it's ever come before the magistrate. He's shaking his head, no, it has not.
Okay, so anyhow, it's not just one item, there's a lot of things in play here on these corrections, and they're all based on commercial, but they have to be uniformly throughout, as Noel Hollingsworth said, for the small guy, too. There's no need for us to go make new rules that we can't even deal with the ones we have. Why make new rules if we're not enforcing the ones we have? That makes absolutely no sense. So, what I'm trying to explain to you is there's plenty of rules on the books that we can do things with already that we're not, okay? I don't know the answer to that. I'm, you know, the council's up here, but...
He's become more brazen with the thing. He laughs at you guys. He laughs at you. He's become more brazen.
Okay. Anyhow, we can't go back and forth with it, unfortunately, I apologize for that. But anyhow, I've gotta tell you, my preference is for it to go back to the comp plan board and to get thoroughly vetted a little bit more, to see where we can get, so we don't have as many problems along the way making these changes. It just doesn't make any sense to me.
Go ahead, Steve.
Um, Mayor, I'm missing your point here. Because on one hand, you're saying that it needs to go back to the comp board to be reworked, on another one, you're saying we don't need any more new laws or regulations. So, I don't know which one it is. It sounds like a delay tactic to me. Listen, this thing has been in front of the comp plan twice, okay? It's been in front of the comp plan since about May, and they worked on it through the middle of the summer, it came back, we looked at it, it didn't even come here. I looked at it and I said, you know what, it's not fair. Gay, you and I had a phone call, and I said, you know what, it's not gonna see the light of day because it's not fair, it's not right, it doesn't treat our current nursery owners properly, right? So, we sent it back to the comp plan again, and they did their job. They worked on it, they tweaked it, they got the experts that they needed to work on it, and it's before you, okay? So, from... You want to send it back to the comp plan again? You know, let's approve it tonight, will they have a special meeting of the comp plan in the next two weeks, so that we can then vote on it in two weeks, or as adjusted by them?
Well, I'd like to say something.
Well, I'll tell you why I'm trying to rush it through. Your question is, why am I trying to rush it through? Because I only got two meetings left here.
That's right.
And I'm afraid if I'm not here, it's not gonna get done. Can I be any more blunt than that? Can I be any more blunt than that? Unless I'm sitting here, I'm not sure it's gonna get done. And that's why I'm rushing it through.
Well, I'd like to say something...
And I gave it... I'm sorry, I've got the floor at the moment, but you can have it here in a second. And the thing is, is we've been working on it all summer long, okay? And it's come and gone to the comp plan twice, it's come here, and we either let's take action, or let's not pull these folks' chains anymore, and let's just say we're not gonna do anything. Let's not play games and send it back to the comp plan for a third time, knowing that, as you stated just a minute ago, we don't need any more laws, we're fine the way it is.
Fine, then I'm voting it down.
Well, let me say something. We can all step down from our soapboxes, we don't need to go that way. Um, you're welcome.
Sorry, I got a little overexcited. You know what? Seriously, I do apologize, I got a little overexcited.
Thank you.
I shouldn't have done that. Thank you, thank you for pointing it out.
Katie, you did an excellent job, and there was no doubt in any of our minds that you were gonna do an excellent job. Because there's so many pros and cons right now, because there's so much, you know, well, we want this, but we want this, you have to come to some kind of compromise. It can't be just, oh, I want to rush this through. Because we've sent things back, drainage boards, comp boards, I can't tell you how many times it's gone back to different boards for multiple things. There was issues that people sat on these boards, and it went on for years. Years! I know, I sat out there, I listened, I watched, I paid attention, so I think it's better to let it go back, beat it up again, let's come to a compromise. These people here need help. These people here want this. What do you do? Well, there's more of them, so let them have it. You can't do that. You have to find a happy medium for everybody. Whether or not they have to make out a list and say, well, I want this, 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 and this, and I won't settle for anything less than that. Fine, present it, give it to us. You know, let's have something, but you can't just say, I want to rush this through. I mean...
The point is, is that I want to get it done before I leave, and I get that, I get that. If we want to call that rushing it through, that's really not what it is. That is what I called it just a moment ago, because... But the fact that it's been, we've been working on it for six months, I don't think is rushing it through.
Six months is nothing. You've had some issues that have gone on for years.
There are these people that are sitting right over here that six months is nothing. Tell them, tell them that six months is nothing. And tell them, you know, that they, we should just... We have put in an incredible amount of time and effort into this. I personally have put an incredible amount of time and effort into this, but I know the comp plan board has.
I'm gonna interrupt you and let... We don't usually do this, but because George Morris sits on the comp plan board, is the chair of it, I'm gonna let you go ahead and say something.
George Morris, chair of the comp board. Yes, we have put in an immense amount of time into it, and we have worked through the summer. But at the same time, it's a very complex situation, as well as we only have two hours, and we meet once a month. You know, with all due respect, it was taken from us, we never really finished it, I really do feel it needs more time with the comp board. I mean, and I feel for you, I understand where you're coming from, and there are people being hurt, I think on both sides. We need to really go over it a little bit more and take into consideration what we've seen here tonight, what we've heard, et cetera. It is a very complex situation. And with two hours a month, because we meet once a month, it requires an immense amount of time. And yes, you've been there the whole time, and you understand the situation, and I respect you for that, and you've given us great input, but I don't feel, as a board, that we were done. We just weren't done with it. And that's my opinion.
All right, thanks, George.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciate it.
Let me jump in here for just a second.
Go ahead, Gary.
Just two things. One is, just an observation, basically, this is saying that the council's gonna regulate the nurseries. That's really all it's really saying, in its basic form, is we're gonna regulate the nurseries. The other thing I'd like to ask is, Katie, Ms. Edwards, do you have any observations you can bring on this and bring it to light?
Through the chair. Our role as council to the town is to limit the town's liability and exposure, and I get very nervous when we start talking about things that we can't regulate. It was very important for us to begin with the premise that state statute is very clear on what municipalities can and cannot do with respect to the regulation of nurseries. It's there in chapter 581.034. It's preempted to the state. As a municipality, you are preempted from regulating, inspecting, permitting the nursery owners, which includes nurseries. It does not extend to those retail, plant operations, and the landscape operations. That was number one. Number two, we're talking about what is a nuisance, and that question was asked, and in listening to the concerns, they all seem to stem around nuisance mitigation, whether it's the traffic concerns and the impacts on the roads and infrastructure, whether it's the hours of operation, and whether it's compatible with the half-acre or acre residence next door that's not being used for bona fide or commercial ag purposes. All of the issues that I took, about nine pages of notes and listening to trying to find the theme, so if we do come back at a future meeting, and I have two hours to chisel down on what the real concerns are and advise you appropriately, everything seems to revolve around, one, protecting bona fide nurseries, which I believe this does, those that are permitted, again, to limit the town's liability and exposure, are not being told you have to go jump through hoops. Those are protected, and that's what the ordinance seeks to do. To address the nuisance issues, that was, by the special exception process, was addressed, to give the individual council members the opportunity to reengage with the public in the neighborhoods, to make sure that there was broad discretion and the ability to grant a special use permit based on the individual needs of both the operation in respect with the neighborhood, to make sure that there was compatibility. So, all of those various concerns that you heard this evening, and we took pains to include that, and a lot of those concerns were addressed in this ordinance. Making sure, for example, there were concerns about the fuel tanks. We don't need to specify that because there's duplicative regulation with Broward County. Broward County issues those permits, they come out, they regulate. These individuals have dealt with Broward County with respect to fuel tanks, they know that. There were some things that were suggested in the first ordinance that, quite frankly, you just can't do because of that preemption and because of the Right to Farm Act. So, I think that the committee, in looking at various case law, looking at the statutes, looking at the definitions, really tried to carefully craft that, to do those two things. Recognize those various categories of what the town can and cannot regulate and provide a vehicle to mitigate nuisances and protect both business and community. And that's what you have before you tonight. If you have to come back again and do it, I will keep bringing up the case law and make sure, again, that our role as council is to make sure that we minimize the town's liability and exposure to needless lawsuits for things that we can and cannot do.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Katie. All right, so where do we go from here?
Well, I'll say this, I mean, clearly, the consensus of the council is to send it back to the comp board. I respect the comments that the chairman of the comp board said, that he'd like to get it back. If he'd like to get it back, then that belongs to go back to him, so I will support that as well. I will make one final comment. It's gonna come back to this board, and I'm not gonna be here. But I'm not going away. And I will be in those comp board meetings, either as a resident or as a member, hopefully as a member of the board. Either way, I will be there, I will be watching over what happens here, and I'm not going away. So, I expect you all to take it up, I expect you all to do what's right, not only for the residents, but what's right for the nurseries, and to protect them from some of the abuses that we saw tonight. And I expect that to happen, and I trust that it will.
All right, well, right now, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
So...
Call the question.
So, I have a question, Keith. If we're going to send it back to the comp plan board from this position, are we voting no on it here, or what's... Where do we go from here?
You withdraw the motion, right?
If... You have several things you can do. You can vote the motion up and down, or up or down. You can withdraw the motion, which would also have to withdraw the second, and then you could make a motion and send it back to the comp plan board. If you did so, we would also, because we do have zoning in progress in effect, we would ask you to put some parameters on when it would come back before you, because we have the zoning in progress in effect. So, and I think that was just redone, like, a meeting ago?
Was the zoning in progress?
Yeah. So, you just have to put some timeframe, so that we know if you end up doing that. So, or, that's what you can do.
I'd say call the question. Okay, I'm fine with that. We'll move on from there.
All right, you want to call the question? Okay, go ahead.
Board Member Schroder?
Are we withdrawing, or are we voting?
No, they're voting, too.
It's a motion to approve the item.
We don't have a choice?
It's up or down right now, because it's not the comp plan, they haven't withdrawn, they want to call the question, so...
Board Member Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Board Member Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fiskelli?
What was his vote?
It's up or down on this?
No, what did... I couldn't hear his vote.
He voted yes.
He voted yes. Yes, okay. Yes.
Mayor McKay?
No.
So, we have a 3-2 vote.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to forward this to the comp...
You can't do that. At this point now, you have a recommendation of approval going to the town council. If the town council in the next meeting chooses to send it to the comp plan board, they would do that at that time.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we gotta stand up and do the pledge all over again?
Well, is the meeting concluded?
Yeah, that's it on this agenda.
So, the meeting's adjourned?
Okay. So, the meeting's adjourned, we gotta open a new meeting, so we gotta stand up and do the pledge all over again for the next meeting. So, if we could please stand for the pledge?
Call the roll first?
You want to call the roll? I don't care.
Oh.
Call the roll.
Well, everyone first.
Whatever you want.
Let me go ahead and do it afterward.
Okay.
God, help his craving.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, call the roll, please. Council Member Schroder?
Here.
Council Member Bright Cruz?
Here.
Council Member Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fiskelli?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
Mayor, although unusual, because there's so many people here, maybe in your ability to set the agenda, you may want to call up item eight now, to dispose of it at this time, totally within your prerogative.
All right, if we could go ahead and read the ordinance again, number eight?
Sure. Mayor, this is an ordinance to the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida pertaining to the regulation of new commercial plant nurseries as a special exception use, amending the town of Southwest Ranches Unified Land Development Code by amending section 10-30, terms defined, amending article 45 Agricultural and Rural Districts, sections 45-30, general provisions, and 45-50 permitted and prohibited uses, amending article 60 Community Facility Districts, section 60-30 permitted and prohibited uses, amending article 100 Application Submittal and Notice Requirements, and Notice Procedures, sections 100-20 General Application Requirements, 100-30 Minimum Required Content for All Public Hearing Notifications, and 100-60 Mail Notice Requirements for Public Hearings, creating article 112 Special Exception Uses, providing for codification, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve.
Very aggressive.
Second.
Sorry, I was going through a procedural issue.
I'm not sure what...
Okay, well, just wait a minute, because we don't need to go through the exercise all over again.
All right, obviously, everything's incorporated by reference from the prior meeting. This item comes for you with a recommendation of approval from a local planning agency on a 3-2 vote. Obviously, a 3-2 vote will not adopt it at the town council level, that's where I was trying to get at, okay? So, at this point in time, you have several options. You have a motion to approve in a second. You could take a vote, chances are, unless two people change their minds in five seconds, that it will fail. If you do that, then you could do a motion to deny, or a motion to table, or a motion to modify, anything else you want. So, it depends at this point if you want to record a vote of the council, or if you wish you simply table it to the comp plan board, it's up to the council.
So, we can make a motion to table it and put it back to the comp board?
You could. There's a motion in a second, which, when I was talking, was going on, to approve, so... But a motion to table takes precedence, so whatever you all deem fit as a council.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to table it and send it back to the comp board.
Second.
Motion to table the comp.
Pretty second.
Okay, so with that, and he just asked, because there's a zoning in progress, is that within, how long do you want it to stay there?
It depends on many meetings. What meetings do we... How many comp board meetings are we moving forward?
We only have one meeting in November, and they've gotta have time, you know, I mean...
Three months? Four months? What do you want?
I'd say by January.
I know.
One in November, one in December, one in January. How long are we gonna push it out?
As long as it takes to make everybody happy.
As long as it takes. That's the problem. That's the problem. The answer is, as long as it takes.
No, that's not a problem. You know, I didn't even want to go this avenue, I didn't, but I can't sit here any longer either. You know, you can't be biased about this, that's not what it is. You represent everybody, everybody here as representation.
That's exactly right.
This does not seem like that's maybe where we're heading.
Well, so I'm attempting to represent everybody and have some action for everybody.
But you're not. But you're not, you're not representing everybody. You're just willing to make up your mind right now and be done with it, and you even heard from the chair that he thought it was a good idea to bring it back.
And I agree with him.
Not that he's respected any more than me, because I think I have been respected, and I'm not the lone man on the totem pole. I can think about this, but I can think about everybody's needs. And if we can take and make this work where everybody is a little bit happy, why shouldn't we do that? Why should we just say yea or nay? Because then everything in the town should be yea or nay. Everything.
Well, and I agree to that, it should go back to the comp plan. I'm not, I'm just saying, how long are they going to have to wait?
Well, why don't we ask a different question? Why don't we ask the comp board how long they think it's going to take?
One meeting, two meetings, three meetings?
That's a good question.
Because it's only two hours at a meeting.
There are two hours a meeting, obviously, and I don't believe we're meeting in December, but, I mean, I'm going to suggest we change that, and maybe we could step up, you know, two meetings a month, or make extra meetings. I don't know, I have to talk, I have to suggest that, talk to the liaison, et cetera, so...
So, what do you think?
February?
All right, you should be able to get it done by then, right? You would think.
Yeah, you would think.
Well, that gives you eight hours.
I mean, you know, listen...
That's eight hours, that's one day's work.
This is the only thing that we work on. We don't, we don't talk about anything else, we're not playing cards.
Right.
You know?
No, it would just have to be this one specific item, you know, that's all you talk about.
You know, worst-case scenario, you know, it could be, you know, it could be, it could be January, I don't know. I mean, at least two, two or three meetings.
But let's call it, to be on the safe side, let's call it February, and if you're done before that, we'll bring it back sooner.
It would be my goal to get it done sooner and step up the meetings perhaps to expedite this.
Is everybody okay with that? We'll say February, and if it gets done before that, we will bring it back sooner.
I agree, we should expedite this.
Agreed.
We should, you know, concentrate on this, 100 percent.
Okay.
I can't speak for my...
All right, let me just help, Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
So, there's a motion to table that was made by council member Schroder, it was seconded by council member Fisickelli.
Yep.
The motion, the way I understand it now, is a motion to table no later than the February meeting.
Right, and if they get it done before then, they can let us know, and we'll get it in.
Well, unless they, unless they tell me in January, they're going to need more time.
Well, no, I mean, then you would have to come back in February, then you'd vote again. All right, so the motion on the table is a motion to table to bring it back to the first meeting in February for consideration.
Correct.
Those in the audience, it's February 14.
Valentine's Day? You must be kidding me. Okay.
Valentine's Day. Motion to table is non-debatable, non-discussable.
I don't think you're going to see that many people here for Valentine's Day, but maybe.
Ready?
Correct.
Call the question.
Now, this is to table it until February.
Table this item, right, and bring it back to February 14, 2019. Council member Schroder?
Yes.
Council member Bright Cruz?
No.
Council member Jablonsky?
No.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
No.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Okay, the motion does not pass.
Okay, not a problem.
A motion to approve with the second on the table.
Go ahead, call the question, we'll fix it.
This is a motion to approve. Council member Schroder?
No.
Council member Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Council member Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
No.
Mayor McKay?
No.
No, okay, so that motion does not pass.
Okay.
We could do this all night long.
No, we're done.
Oh, okay.
Didn't go back to the comp plan board, it sits here and is dormant. So, we bring it back what we want. There's no time limit, there's no nothing.
Keith, can somebody make another motion?
What do you want, Debbie?
Can't they make an alternate motion?
No, I'm not opening. But at the beginning, you stated that...
I'm going to move the meeting around.
Would it be answered, because Edwards would then, if she was writing the whole text, then she could give the answer, so that, so at least everybody has, knows what, what we have our expertise here, and now that it's going to be for so much longer, we have our expertise here to answer the question.
She's, she's not gone, she'll still be in the mix with what we're doing moving forward.
But who sat here for this meeting, you said she would answer the questions, but then she got hijacked up on the day.
Okay, are there other questions we didn't answer, Katie, by chance, that they want to hear? I mean, I don't know what you're looking for here.
I'm not looking for anything in particular, Doug, it's just that she never...
Okay, well, I'm not opening, I'm going back to the floor, but the objective was for people to come up here and address things and ask questions, and Katie was going to answer.
Are we done, are we adjourned?
Let Keith go.
Are we done?
Hold on.
The mayor, the motion to approve was denied, the motion to table was denied. Before you dispose of this item, are there any other motions? Maybe the motion to table to the comp plan board wants to be reconsidered by anyone, or if not, it's denied.
Not interested.
No.
I'll make a motion that it, go back to the comp plan board for February.
Is that the original motion to bring it back here by February 14?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to vote against it.
Yeah, this is a circus.
You're welcome to.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table to the February 14, 2019 meeting, so that it can go back to the comp plan board. Council member Schroder?
I'm not sure. I mean, is this going to be the end of it? I mean, we will definitely...
No, we tried it, but now they decide, since they didn't win, they want to go back to do that option.
And basically, that's it. And basically, that's it. You didn't say adjournment.
Yeah, but we have no limitations, though.
Okay, what's this?
I'm going to play fair, I'm going to say send it back to the comp board, I agree, I'm voting in.
Is you and Steve.
Okay, one second, we're recording the vote. Council member Schroder was a yes, correct?
I'm going to send it back to the comp board, yes. Yes.
Okay, council member Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Council member Jablonsky?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what was it?
Yes.
Yes, okay, sorry. Vice Mayor Fisickelli?
Yes.
And Mayor McKay?
Normally, I'd say yes, but since we've already been here, I'm saying no.
Okay, so that motion passes to table the item to February 14, 2019.
Okay, are we happy, Crew? Are we happy?
Not happy, but...
Well, you would have been happy if it went through tonight.
Yeah.
All right, we're back to Mayor, item three on the agenda, which is public comment.
This is regular meeting, public comment.
Do we have cards for public comment? Yes, we do. Mary Gay Chapels, I guess, requests to come up to speak first, followed by Jim Lasky, followed by George.
Your guess is as good as mine.
Dallas, Dalis?
I'm really exhausted, guys, I mean, this has really been, I'm old, I need to go home and get my beauty rest.
Thanks, sir.
Listen, I want to take this time to thank the Davie police that we have employed. We had another bad accident in front of my place. I live on Sterling and Dykes, right across the street from Bluff Elementary, Hawks Bluff, yeah, I know, Bluff, anyway. Car rolled over, two SUVs, one hit the other, and the other one was upside down, and the cops were there before the wheels stopped spinning. And there was more police, I haven't seen so many police, but it was wonderful because they were able to block all the roads, and Dykes Road is heavily traveled at night, communicating between Weston and Pembroke Pines. And there were three ambulances, they got the people out right away, the tow trucks were there, and it was really well-run and well-done. And I just want you to know that they did an awesome job. And we had, of course, the regular Davie from Davie Davie, and then we had our police from Davie. The other thing is, I just want to say that I don't want to ever sit in those seats up there. I have an opinion about things, and I can stand here and blast you with it, but it's a big responsibility you have, and you have people that are sitting here that have issues. And then you have people that are creating the issues, and if they're legal, they're legal, and if they're illegal, they're illegal. And now, we're pushed to making more laws. And I'm glad that you're going to send it back to the board, because I'm going to be there, and I'm going to try to help iron out some of the glitches that I saw. The original glitch that, that I called you about was, we were allowed to have one trailer and one vehicle to go on the trailer, and one truck, and that was it. And, you know, this stuff about I can't leave my property with my equipment is nuts, because that's how I make my living. So, there are some other things, and Freddie, you mentioned about the pond on some of these nurseries, there are things that we need to address. Our water is in jeopardy, because they fertilize, they, they really hit them with fertilizer to make them grow, and so we need them to be aware of making water retention areas to catch that water. And that's stuff that we need to put in there. So, I just want you to know, thank you, yes, I see the blinker going.
Jim Lasky, I already told you my information, she just hit on a very good point. The phosphates, they're going into the water, they're getting carried down to C11 in the Everglades. You realize that the filtering process is not working the way it was supposed to, and we're killing the hell out of everything from Lake Okeechobee down, and, you know, you see them washing up on the shore now. What I wanted to say is, somebody was saying that a business tax license wouldn't be profitable, but in Dade County, they generate for just a guy that picks up junk out of your trash pile, and sometimes a little more, because my neighbor was robbed, and the guy was caught, and the guy went to jail, $694 a year. So, if you've got your volunteer fire department, for instance, issuing these licenses and doing some half-ass inspections, excuse my French, okay, you're talking about a money generator. That's a lot of money. How many of these guys on, on a couple acres down there by my house, got 20 guys paying a couple hundred dollars a month, cash? It doesn't go to you guys, but think about that, that number right there, 694 plus 60, a lot of these properties, you don't get that big of a cut from the property taxes, do you? Do you see? That's a good thought to consider. So, I really think, and not only that, we were talking about being in compliance with state law, and, and, by the way, that's state sales tax, mandatory 5.8 percent, of course, now they want to raise it 40 percent, but you've got an obligation to collect that tax because you ask for it back from Tallahassee every year, I assume. Why aren't we doing more with that? All the rents are taxable at 5.8 percent, whether it's your Uncle Joe letting you use the property for commercial use. I mean, it's clear as a bell, you just read the statute, it's there. So, you know, again, let's consider that, because if a guy's up here to avoid the taxation of Dade County, and that's where he's working, he's got an unfair advantage to the guys that are paying the taxes in Dade County. And he's only up here for one thing, to beat you out of some money, and then whatever else he picks up along the way. Thank you. Mayor, the next speaker is George Carles. Mr. Carles, you here?
Want to come up again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Tommy Pender, I think he was here to speak on the other item, John Eastman, Mr. Eastman?
He's coming.
We just had our bulk service this week, it came late in the day, and they totally trashed 188th Avenue. This is mostly for Keith to hear. I don't know if you put any pressure on them enforcing the contract or whatever, but it's, nothing has happened, it's still the same, they're coming off schedule, and they sent the scoop out this week, and every single house that had stopped that all over the road, you know, it's got to stop. That's it, thank you.
And our final speaker, Mayor, is Bob Hartman.
Bob Hartman, candidate for District One, council member, Southwest Ranches. We're at a point in the campaigns where people are getting ugly, they're throwing mud, and I just want to go on the record on one thing, because it's, this is as fake news as anything the best Russians could produce. There's people running around town saying, "I'm for the two ordinances, excuse me, the two ballot amendments concerning the 5-0 vote." Those who are saying it, and those who know me, and half the town that I've talked to, I have said to them, I haven't taken a position on it, none whatsoever, none at all. But there's people out there saying, "I'm pro, I'm anti-business, I'm this, I'm that." I'm going on record on that one issue, because you know what? If people continue to say it, they'll know who the liars are. Thank you.
That's the final speaker, Mayor.
Okay. Board reports, any board reports? Seeing no board reports, council member comments?
Yeah, I'd like to say so.
Go ahead.
I agree, no one should play dirty. You know, I've never had a Twitter account, or whatever they're called, or a Facebook account, and somehow, I got on there.
I just pointed out your vote.
No big deal, I could come back and, you know, you don't have to comment right now, I could come back and say, "Are you for or against it?" You know something, you're not supposed to campaign in town hall. Am I correct, Keith? Am I correct?
Keith, no campaigning in town hall, right?
You're not supposed to campaign within the municipal boundaries.
Okay.
Within the, sorry, governmental buildings.
I sit on the council, I didn't talk about it, I talked about the 5-0 and how that could affect. That's not my prerogative to do, Keith?
I'm sorry, I haven't seen a violation on the...
Because I think we sat here not too long ago, and council member Jablonsky and council member Bright Cruz both supported openly, sitting here on the daisies, and I...
You're correct.
Bob Hartman?
So, I'm not allowed to talk to you. You know something, Bob, you should stop being so bitter, that's, that's what I think. I think you're very bitter, Bob, I think you feel like you deserve something, or you should just walk into it. You know, anything good in your life, you've fought for, and you've fought hard for, and you've fought, I would hope, honestly.
Doing it.
Everybody's got an opinion. That's all I want to say.
Okay. Anyone else? Steve?
I, I, I just want to say that this is my last month on the council, my second-to-last meeting, and I just wanted to say that, and I'll say this again next month, but I don't want to pass up the opportunity, of saying that it has been nothing less than an honor and a privilege to serve this town. This town means more to me than I think anybody realizes, and I mean that sincerely, and you all know me well, but I came out here when my kids were very young, and my wife and I looked for a place where we could raise our kids, where we felt like there was a community that would be that village that would be around our kids to help us raise them. And we could have gone anywhere, but we went here, because this was what we found and felt like was the best place, and I haven't regretted it for a second. And for the ability and the honor that you all have given me to not only raise my family here, but to serve in this capacity, is just an honor and a privilege that I will always, always be thankful for, and, and I always appreciate, so thank you very much.
Freddie, you got anything? You good?
Yeah, I'll jump in, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for everybody who's still awake and listening out there, it's been quite an evening. and listening out there. It's been quite an evening. Just a couple of things I want to mention, that have to deal with the upcoming events and calendar. October twentieth, we have our annual craft fair at the Equestrian Park from ten to four on a Saturday, coming right up. On the twenty-seventh, we have townwide, sponsored by Rolling Oaks Civic Association, the Halloween at the barn, starting at six p.m. Everybody bring a red solo cup. You might need it. We have a great time, and, and I'm sure this year will be just, be fantastic, the lead. The ladies really put the, really work hard at this. We have the Flowmobile, the DMV Flowmobile, October twenty-fifth, here at town hall. We have the Broward County Property Appraiser on the first of November, and on the seventeenth of November, we have the Parks Foundation Car Show and Chili Festival on ten to four here at the barn. And something else I just want to mention, we have coming up, something a little different that we haven't done in the past, and that is, we have a meet the candidates night coming up next week. And the first night, I think, is Monday night, and John, John Eastman, are you here?
Yep.
John? Wait, wait, hi. John Eastman will be at, meet him on Monday night, I think it's six to eight.
Yep.
And then Wednesday, the fifteenth, Bob Hartman, Bob, raise your hand. He'll be there six to nine. So, come, ask questions, see their answers, put them on the spot. I know I got put on the spot numerous times and still do, and you learn from it, and it's a, it's a very, moving forward, it's a, it's a very positive experience for everybody, but you get to hear everybody. And so, I encourage everybody to come out and, come out and talk to the candidates. And I'll wrap it up with that, Mayor.
Okay, Doc. I'm good. I don't need anything, so I'm going to get a legal comment.
Keith, you're up.
I'm dealing with an email with the Broward County Property Appraisers Office back and forth now that I'll alert you to now, just so.
Okay.
It's real time. Someone sent them a copy of our resolution dealing with the property on the corner that we're storing fill on. So, they want to speak to us, because the person who apparently anonymously sent it to them suggested that we should be losing our tax exemption on that property as a result of the lease.
Okay.
So, I just forwarded you the email, Andy, as well as Marty, so that's probably why you hear screaming in the background. But, so I'm giving you a heads up. Obviously, we will vigorously defend the lease, because all it did was enable us to get some free fill. And so, I'll make that clear when I speak to them in the morning about it. In other news, the OIG opinion finally came out. I don't know if they call it an opinion or report, finally came out. The town responded accordingly. They actually put excerpts of our response within the report. It was exactly what we told you for the last six months that we've been dealing with them. No finding of malfeasance or anything wrong by the town. Right when Andy, well, right after Andy, before Andy came in, right the weeks that Marty came here, there was an accounting issue relating to the then-waste provider, which no taxpayers were hurt in the event, because we still had our money, and we still actually owe them money. But the OIG wrote a, an opinion about the fact that the town missed some of that accounting in those initial months. So, it's online if anyone wants to read it, and I'm sure Andy would be happy to answer any questions that may come along. But I know that procedures have been put into place to try to prevent that from occurring in the future. So, that's it from a legal standpoint. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Keith. The only thing I'll add to that is, as Keith has said, we've kept you all up to speed throughout this process. Over the six or seven years that they looked at, we furnished them with over ninety million dollars' worth of procurements. They looked at our procurement code. They looked at every bid, every contract, every everything that we had done over the past period of years. They analyzed one contract, which turned out to be the solid waste contract, which is, as you all know, probably the most complicated contract we had. And, and the big issue they identified was in the first year, and as Keith said, Marty and I weren't here when that contract was bid. That was also at the same time the Resource Recovery Board that the county had was breaking up. So, the tipping fee was the issue in the contract, because when that contract was done, it wasn't clear what was going to happen with the resource recovery and where that was going to go. So, the contract was, was kind of an either-or on tip rates, and the vendor at the time, which was SWS, which became LGL, had, had charged at, at the incorrect rate. So, the vast majority of what they identified occurred in that first year of that contract. The other thing I do want to make very clear is that, when we realized we had an issue, we withheld the last month's payment to the vendor. So, taxpayers' funds, tax money was never in jeopardy. As we went through the process with, with the OIG and got it resolved, we actually owed the waste hauler additional funds. So, I just want to be very clear that the taxpayers throughout the entire process were protected. We've made some, some changes to our system. We've increased some training. We've put some policies and procedures in, in place to better check and guard against that in the future, and I certainly don't ever expect to see an issue like this arise again. And obviously, if you all have questions, I'd be happy to discuss it further. Other than that, Mayor, that's really all I have. It's been a long evening.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.